A meeting of November the 2nd, 2022 to order at 7:00. Roll call.
Jerry Shute.
George Knoll.
Sean Harley.
Randy Snead.
Erica Pardon.
Derek Jones.
I'm not Lisa Mulaney.
Mark Daniele. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gee, you about got him knocked over in there.
M C E D C.
Is it okay if I just address you from here? I didn't know.
Yeah.
I know that Laura was in in September and gave you an update on what was going on countywide and specifically in Argus. But I just wanted to come and talk to you today because Laura has resigned from M C E D C. I'll be taking her position in the interim.
So then you're Greg Hillsbrand.
I am Greg Hillsbrand, yes. And so I wanted to come down and introduce myself to you and let you know a little bit about me. I've been working for the E D C for three years. Before that, I worked for Pilot News for 20-plus years with Jim. And, I'm sorry, in just about, yeah, in just about every facet you could.
I'm quoting you on that.
And now, because I do that, a lot of you are under the misnomer that I have a background in journalism. Actually, my education's in economics. That fits me pretty well, though, working in E D C now. Oh, and actually, I have an associate from Anzilla, and then before that, I went down to IU to finish up in Bloomington. So I'm familiar with that. But Anzilla, out there also, a key part to what we're doing here in the county is Anzilla, Marion College of Anzilla with us. I wanted to talk about some of the new things we're going to be changing. I don't know if anybody remembers, before we used to do, we called them bear interviews, but it's part of the business retention and expansion program. That's one of the key pillars of economic development. You had the B R E, which is Business Retention and Expansion, attraction for new business, and in the workforce aspect of that. Because of COVID, we put that on hold. Because what that is, is meetings with the industry face-to-face, confidential. And we usually will pull in some local officials so you can meet the local industry. And also, they have a chance to maybe express that there's a pothole or something, you know? It gives them an opportunity to talk to you about what issues they're having. These are all confidential. What we do is we can compile all that information we get from the industry in an anonymous-type report saying, this is the type of thing we're seeing in industry. You know, they're putting more focus here, less focus there. It's a good way for us to get a feel of what industry is expanding, maybe warrant signs that there's some contraction on the horizon that we need to look for. But typically, when we did these before, it was under Jerry Chavez, and we would do them like every three or four years. You would pick out a selection of industry. We found it more effective to do them every year with different industries. So you think like a third of your industry, do it this year, another third, another third, then you start over in two years instead of just waiting three years to do it. And that way, we can be following up with people with this constant contact with them. And we've kind of fallen down on that lately. It's something that we're going to get back in. And now, kind of a behind-the-scenes look at how the sausage is made is that we have some software that's coming that's going to be working with us, some C R Ms. We're going to be a lot more efficient on how we run and how we stay in touch with industry. So I'm looking forward to that. I know that we've worked in the past, and it's been a long time, in the Crossroads. And we're going to continue doing that. Crossroads just had a strategic meeting last week. There were about 25 individuals there. It's an ongoing quality-of-life initiative. A lot of you probably remember when economic development was, you know, promoting, you know, that green field or that empty, and then people would come, you know, we'd get an industry in there, they post 200 jobs available, and they line up down the street to get those 200 jobs. And it doesn't work that way. As you know, we have over 200 jobs available in the county today that we can't find people to work in. So what has changed is that people don't relocate for jobs. They relocate for that quality of life. So economic development nationwide, it's not just us. Everybody's shifting gears and working on that quality of life, you know, making it a place that people want to be. And then the industry looks at that, where's my workforce at? Where can I be efficient at? And then they'll locate there. So that's, you'll see us doing a lot of that. That's why we're key to the, we're doing that Career Technical Education Center, working with the 10 school districts there so we can make that more efficient, make that available for more students. Right now, there's a 10-school district corporation co-op, and those kids are sent in 10 different directions for these classes. And the transportation's all on the student. So if a student from Argus wants to learn to well, they have two options, Plumbet or Knox. Knox is an hour drive and across the town. So it's just not feasible for somebody. And Plumbet is usually pretty pull-up with kids. It's hard to get into that program. So by us providing C T in one location, the school districts can have a short bus or a bus of kids. They don't have to rely on their own transportation. They can get on, they go to one location, get off, and they can take all the career, much like El卡 has. And that's why bringing the kids go to El卡 because they can load up a bus, and that hairdresser and car mechanic are on the same place. And that's what we're working on there. That's part of that quality-of-life initiative. The new one that, I've just, I've done a little bit of work in it in Culver, but I was just at a conference and was learning more about is retail is a big part of quality of life. Now, you're saying, I shop at Amazon and Walmart. If they don't have it, I don't need it, you know? But people look at retail downtown as an experience, and they're still wanting to go out. You know, you were in your house for two years of COVID, you couldn't wait to get out to the place. So now that people are going to, when they're judging, you know, the quality of life of a place, they're looking at, what's that retail look like? Can I, restaurants there, little shops, you'll see more businesses. I know that there's a business in Plumbet where most of their business is out the back door. There's some 80% of their stock online, but they do have a little storefront where somebody wanted to come in and look. And I think you're going to see a lot more places like that. But that's what we're going to be looking at, is how can we help these downtowns fill up that retail landscape? What are they missing? What could go there? And so I'm looking forward to it. I've talked to a couple of the downtown merchants already, both restaurateurs, you know, and I'm excited to work down there. I think that's pretty much a wrap-up on what I'm doing and what we expect. But most of all, I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I'm looking forward to working with Mark and all of you on economic development here in Argus.
Well, thank you. It really sounds promising.
Thank you.
I have a question, if you would.
Sure.
Just a quick question.
Boom.
Have you given any thought to, you know, all of our towns in the county and, you know, in the area, really? We all have done different things to increase our quality of life and this, that, and the other. But, you know, we never really know where we stand. You know, I hate to use the term like a grade level, but where we stand in comparison to what people are looking for in that quality, you know, given the community's, you know, a grade. So we know where to work. And I think that would be very helpful to leaders like us when we sit up here and make decisions, you know, on what to do. You know, we've done a terrible lot here in Argus, and, I mean, there's a lot to be done yet. But it'd be nice to have some kind of, you know, when we're looking at those things, kind of go along with our plan to go forward. I think that would be helpful from an organization like yours to maybe kind of try to provide that back to us. To our director here or, you know.
No, your free inquire. I'm a big person on numbers and results charting, things like that. You know, like, we have so much housing available in 2020. What's the housing availability in Argus in 2023, 2024, every year? And that's something with this new software I mentioned quickly, that we're going to be able to track these projects like that, things like that, so that every year I can come to you and say, hey, Argus gained, you know, 125 jobs. You gained five to 10 more units of housing, you know? This is what your demographics look like, you're going up. And a big one, and I should, it's something that we track on a regional level. And a lot of these things are regional, you know? Yes, you're resident of Argus, but as Culver goes, Argus goes, you know, Brim goes. And we want to, Crossroads did a great job of breaking down those silos, and we want to build up. I can see some of those silos start to be, their foundations coming back. I want to, yeah, switch that. But back to you, reporting on things like that, you know? Educational attainment is a big one. Ball State just did a study, the lieutenant governor was in town about a month ago, wasn't she? She was in town? And one of the things they found in their study was educational attainment, the gap between, you know, what that is now and this community versus that community is a big indicator of which community is succeeding and which one's struggling. If you look at the demographics between Marshall County and Casasco County, the one that'll jump out at it is that educational attainment, you know? And then you look at what those per capita incomes are, and then you go, whoa. You know, there's like a $15,000 per year difference between the median income in Marshall County and the median income in Casasco County. But their education attainment is like 20% to 30% higher as far as bachelor degrees than we are here in Marshall County.
And I take that one kind of grain of salt here, comparing apples to apples, considering the population of the school.
Population, but if you think about it, which population's going to be easier to get higher education? That lower one? Or would you start adding people to, like, you know, is that going to start skewing down, you know?
There are a lot of different things that goes into this.
Right.
That's kind of a miscue, yeah.
But, yeah, that's the type of thing that we want to track, you know? When we have, and we've kind of fallen down, is where, how can we help that entertain or that education attainment number, along with housing and jobs and things like that?
Yeah, I just think some kind of a, you know, like you said, progress report or a great badge. To all of us, you know, here's where you stand, Argus, you've done these great things, you know, you can continue to do it, you know? We think it kind of, businesses are telling us that they want this, this, and this. I mean, it's no secret. We would like to track more business.
Yeah.
You bring us a business, we'll find a home for it.
Oh, yeah. And you guys are sitting, well, I mean, there's a couple of communities in the county that wish they had their own utilities. You know, that's a big one. Wish they were sitting right on a four-lane. And I'll tell you, we are fighting hard to keep those four lanes open for you. My worst nightmare right now is what they're going to do at, is it Dewey there with I can't go?
Right.
Because trucks can't go out across railroad tracks the other way. If they call and sack that, it's going to be a, hey, now they're talking about doing something with railroad tracks, but...
If they would just follow our plan, it'd be fun.
But I know that's a whole nother, sort of issue, isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Again, thank you, sir. Really appreciate you showing up and talking to us. Minutes from 10:19, 2022, record session.
Motion to approve minutes from October 19th.
Second half.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 19th. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes passed.
Stayed, that was out of town. It's good pass.
Citizens input.
John, I think you wanted to talk to us. I do. I'm John Ringgold with Rochester Ford. I made a quote up here a bit on a truck last October of '21, and looked at a trade-in they had at that time. It was a Dodge, a Ram truck. Had 85,573 miles on it when I appraised it. And unknown at that time, industry's been pretty well-known. It's kind of hard to come up with vehicles. We got the truck in for the town of Argus on October 26th of '22, so a year later. And it has 93,972 miles on it now. My problem I have, I quoted with good faith at that time what the truck is worth now. And I can't really get in this crystal ball and see what it's going to be worth a year later. Because usually, normal times, I've been in the industry a little over 40 years. Normal time, a delivery up to the last three years has been six to eight weeks. So it's pretty easy to hold a trade-in for six to eight weeks. It's really hard to do it for a year. And I would, I offered at that time to get a wholesale, because I don't really sell municipal cars off my lot. I usually wholesale them out. So I have a dealer in Lafayette that offered me at that time $20,000 for the truck. Basically, I did the same thing. When the truck came in, sent it to him, he offered me $14,000 for the truck. I came up with a proposal, what I thought was fair, that I could be 17.5. And my reasoning for that is not just because of the devaluation, but from the time I originally appraised it till the time I got the truck, the windshield got broken, the rear bumper had got dented in, and the truck's tires weren't very good at that time, but the truck tires now are basically junk. So I have to make it sellable, not only to remove the decals, which I knew that, I'm going to have to do quite a bit of reconditioning to the truck. I think it's sellable to get to 17.5 and put the money in it and get my money. I'm not going to make a profit on it, which is fine. My truck that I sold you was price guaranteed. So there was no change on that price. You could pull the truck up from the day I proposed in '21 to the day you got it. The price is exactly that. There was no changes there. Being a small dealer, small town, just like, you know, I grew up in Argus, went to school here, and know the small-town happens here. But to lose that type of revenue in a small dealership at this time, it's just tough. So my request was to do $2,500 less, not wholesale it, get the truck ready and try to retail it. So I hope, I'm not trying to welch on a deal. I'm just trying to explain to you my reasoning, why I feel the truck is not worth the same amount it was a year ago. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We're basically just talking $2,500 here.
Yes, exactly.
From what the original was to what he wants now.
Which I think is a fair deal. Because I, as he said, this isn't common. We've never been through this.
Well, hopefully, maybe we can split the difference somehow, maybe throw in some oil changes on the new one or something.
Your new one, your lifetime pre-oil changes from this anyhow, so that's part, that's part of the deal on that one. Yeah.
When I got the information, I didn't realize that the windshield was busted.
Me either.
I didn't, you just tore up like this.
We would have told that.
There's a rear bumper, it's just basically been pushed in. So the rear bumper needs replaced, the windshield needs replaced. Like I said, the tires were very marginal at the time before, but they're the same tires, and they're gone.
Anybody know why our insurance didn't take care of that?
Did anybody move it in? Wasn't turned in.
I can't see that. All I know is from one appraisal to the other.
You know, that's your police treatment. I have no idea.
I'll find out.
Yeah, because that, you know, I agree, when John looked at the truck, you know, it's 8,399 miles in a year. They tried not to drive it a lot, but they didn't need to let it have a broken windshield and a...
Well, another example, I sold a truck to the Culver Community Schools about the same time. And I told them, you know, at that time, and I really, because really, I didn't talk with you folks. I was dealing with your chief, Corey. And I told him at that time, I said, I'm going to give you the valuation of it as long as the market doesn't change. And he said it wasn't going to be driven a lot. But to me, that's about a normal driving year. That's not really, not a ton less miles than what most people drive around here.
The over on the planet, the license.
And you guys don't have to give me an answer tonight. You can just talk about it or whatever. Like I said, I'm just wanting to kind of give you my perspective on it, is all I'm trying to do.
You know, for, the way I figure here, you know, if it was a leased vehicle, we turned it in, and the mileage was over, you have, what, 35 cents a mile in it for the late penalty for not planning ahead for that? So the way I figure that, the difference in miles alone, if we just figured it like that.
Right, for, yeah.
That's $2,900 right there, just on the mileage. So I don't think the $2,500 is out, you know, too much out. Considering there's a broken windshield and a bumper.
Yeah, we weren't aware of that. But we talked about this the last time, John.
I thought it was brought up, because I said something to Corey.
He never brought it up to us, unfortunately. But the whole thing is, you guys want to table this and go over it or...
I'm not, I don't really think it's worth dragging this into another meeting for $2,500. When, I mean, I can justify that in my mind, just from some easy math.
I guess knowing what I know now, I can too. At first, I thought the truck was just in good shape. I knew it had some miles, but they tried to put it on the bottom of the rotation, not use it as much. But again, we weren't aware of these things. And I know your dealership real well, and I know how you guys are. And if you took that loss on every vehicle, pretty soon it would be just an empty lot down there.
So... I just replaced the windshield on the Dodge, and I just put the new tires on the Dodge for my daughter. Not clap the bumper, that was $1,800 bucks.
Well, I kind of thought the $2,500 was just, being honest, that was what I was figuring. It's going to cost me recon it to get the condition I seen it before. That's where I came up with my number.
Yeah, initially, when we first got this, you know, I'll be honest, we didn't know some of this stuff. And we were kind of like, well, you know, deal is a deal. And I'll be a bit of the same way. But after hearing some of these things and then doing some quick math here, I was like, I mean, I can understand your business, I'd like to continue to have the town on good skin, you know, and you're, I'm going to have to buy a new vehicle someplace.
And I tried to shave the price down. I think the truck was well under $40,000. And you can't even buy a used truck on the market today for that kind of money. So we got a good municipal discount, and I passed that right along. So, you know, my whole goal when I sell municipal trucks to make $1,000. You know, because I sell City of Bristol, I sell Town of Middlebury, I don't sell Rochester. But I sell all these towns around.
Go figure, right?
Well, I, you know, it's, the old sheriff bought a lot from me, the new sheriff might buy again from me. It's just according who's making the decisions.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, you know, just the miles alone. If I figured it like a lease, just the miles alone on the overage would be.
I'm going to kind of leave it up to you guys, someone's want to...
I'm not sure what, just need a motion to approve the trade-in. Derek, is that what we need?
You just need a motion, yeah, to just verbally approve a reduction in the trade-in value and accept that at $2,500 less. Whatever, I can't, I didn't notice.
It was $20,000 originally, and my wish is to take it down to 17.5.
Okay.
17.5.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept a reduction in trade-in value for the trade-in on the new police truck. It originally was a trade-in of $20,000, but a year later, things have changed, and the truck condition is a little different. So they like to have 17.5, that's a difference of $2,500. I'd make a motion to approve that reduction.
One second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve the reduction of the trade-in on the new police truck by the $2,500 to make it then their trade-in value of 17,500.
I agree, I appreciate it, folks.
Do we have any further comments?
No.
Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, appreciate you jumping out.
I appreciate that.
See you, John.
Have a good night.
Moving on, attorney report.
I don't have tons, but just a couple of things to keep you updated on. I talked to Jamie tonight about our no-focus agreement. He thinks maybe that's been sent back, but we're going to be looking into that, make sure that, A, we get the money we're supposed to get once that agreement's been signed. And there's a couple of other things still on my plate. One is this chicken ordinance and the basically redraft our zoning ordinance to accommodate what we talked about. And just letting you know, I forgot about it. It's not, I don't know if we're with it all. And then a new issue that kind of came to light was a new agreement with a school resource officer. I got some information late last week, late last week, there you are, about that. And basically, Lisa made some kind of a draft, and I've taken a quick look at that. But we're going to have that back to you folks, I would assume, by the next meeting on that. A tricky thing is going to...
Curious as to why we, I guess, explain why we need a contract when it's their employee. Explain that, how that works. I'm still a little fuzzy on that.
It's a new concept, okay? It's not the same way that we had this arrangement the last time. But this officer is going to be an employee of the school, going to be paid by the school outright, 100%. But he still has to be at least a part-time officer for the town of Argus. Because of that, he may be driving a town of Argus police vehicle. He may have a town of Argus-issued weapon. And we want to make sure that if he's basically doing those responsibilities, that he's complying also with the town of Argus requirements as police officers. So in other words...
I didn't know he was...
If he did something that was in violation of a town of Argus... Antirrest powers. But if he did something that was in violation of our town of Argus policies, we want to be able to say, no, we're not, we're not going to do that, tolerate and put up with it. And we need to let him go as far as that goes.
He's still going to be hooked to the S O Ps for the resource officer in that aspect under this contract.
Yeah, the S operator is a, he's a police officer, but he's simply employed by the schools full-time. That's where his compensation comes from, but he's also a part-time officer for the town. And there may be times when the town says, we needed a felon here, there, for whatever. And so we need that flexibility, but we also need the ability to be able to say, you've got to comply with town of Argus requirements as a police officer.
Okay, I'm following you. I couldn't make heads and tails of what you were saying. That makes more sense now. It's kind of the opposite of what we had originally set up.
One of the big things in that agreement I saw, and I know your S O P's probably covered it, but is transporting students.
Yes.
Agreement we got, as you said, was from Triton, but that was a big portion of that. I think you want to make sure that's spelled out, what he can and can't do.
It's in the S O P. I'll send you a copy of the S O Ps, Derek, so you can, do you have ours, current ones? Okay.
Well, as far as I know, your current...
We may need to, we may need to adjust some things in there to fit that better. I don't know.
Well, we'll give you a chance to look at it.
Absolutely.
And that's fine. That's fine.
As long as you got the updated ones.
But, yeah, my big thing is just to make sure that the town has the authority to say that, hey, you're no longer a police officer if things go south, if something happens. And then the school can deal with repercussions on that.
Makes sense now.
So that's all I have.
Make a motion to accept the attorney report.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to accept the attorney report. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Electric metering system.
So last meeting, we went through that. Bill was up here from I M P A and kind of went through all that. So you guys were asking for some more information with that. I emailed you a bunch of information. So the other side of that is, Sean was asking what we could do about some better pricing. They came back with a little bit better pricing on that. So I just, you know, if we're in agreement with all that, and it looks good, I like to get moving on it. So the new price, it looks like it's going to be about $293,000 is what it comes to. And that'll replace all our electric meters. It'll get the software, all that, so everything's included in that. The only additions might be, that gives us 965 electric meters and up to 800 water meters. So if we add another meter, then there'd be an additional charge per meter. That's how it works. So if we added another meter over that number, I think it adds $750 a year for that meter. So there'd be some small adjustments, but it wouldn't be anything major.
That's not going to have software fee, though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the collector boxes, we've got enough of them to handle quite...
Yeah, we'll have to add another one, but that should, I think each one, he said handles 2,000 meters, I think it was, so...
You see, you have the four drawers.
Yeah.
Hold a certain amount, yeah.
Yep. So we should have plenty of space on that. And like I said, we've done the demo, everything, it seems to be looking, working real good, so... And like I said, we've done the demo, everything, it seems to be looking, working real good, so.
Got a question for Derek. Derek, this is kind of a complex project, it kind of involves two different purchases. One is on the top, a software and licensing and administrative type fees. And the second part of it, which is a larger dollar amount, is the hardware, you know, new meters, that kind of stuff. We need two separate motions for that, or we just make one motion, accept everything? But, you know, it's actually two separate entities going.
You can do one motion, that's fine. I'll be honest, it's the first, I'm here now, I saw the agenda, okay. And I, of course, I wasn't here until last meeting. Um, but obviously, I think Jamie's recommendations carry a ton of weight, and they should. Um, if it's something that he thinks is appropriate, then I, I don't know that I'm gonna see anything that's gonna say, no, that's not a good idea. But again, I'm, I'm very ignorant about exactly what it is we're talking about here, and I don't need you guys to all go into another twenty-minute discussion about it, but.
About an hour.
Or an hour. But one motion would suffice, is to answer your question.
What's the grand total then, Jamie? I don't have that with me.
Looks like two ninety-three. And that, that's an estimate though. I mean, some, some meters will cost more than others, that's just kind of what we use. It could, it could be less than that too. It'll come down to how many three-phase meters we have out there, really.
So the total would've been around, before the discount, it would've been around three eleven, five forty-two. Throw in that ballpark.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
I make a motion to enter in the electric metering system contract with HIPAA.
One second.
We do have a motion and a second to enter the electric meterings contract with HIPAA. Is there any further comments?
No, I would just like to stress that, um, we were able to negotiate, uh, not quite, but almost twenty thousand dollar discount on this whole package by doing it all at once. So that was a savings to the town, be able to recoup some of that return on investment right away versus overtime, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hey Jamie, there, you're going there.
Alright, thanks. I, I have a couple more things too. Um, I updated you today about the furnace, our furnace went bad here.
Right.
Just the bad heat exchanger, they're recommending replacing it. Um, that furnace was original in oh-five, so I'm, I'm getting a price on it, we'll replace the whole thing, so I just wanted to let you know.
You can do the air tubes everywhere. Yeah, do it all at once, and that way it's always the same amount of time load.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's gonna be somewhere between seven and nine, but when I get the price, I'll let you know. But it's gonna be somewhere in there. Um, then one more thing, as far as the river crossing, I, I did send an email out to him, so hopefully I'll hear something back. But I also contacted the state, I got everything rolling with them, so they said the minimum we'll get is ten thousand dollars, so. That's in the process, so we'll see what we get from the state. It could be more than that, but the minimum we'll get is ten thousand, so.
Which river crossing though?
The West Creek.
Well, I know we had a discussion about ten over here too, I didn't know that was different.
That's all I have.
What's this two-hour parking?
Oh, I put that on there.
Yeah.
Cause we need to reinstate. Yeah, downtown's done.
Yeah.
All the parking is open, so you need to reinstate the two-hour and no overnight parking.
Haven't, haven't we took care of that?
No, because we didn't get control of it.
We need a motion then to do that.
I'll make that motion to reinstate the two-hour parking downtown with no overnight parking.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to reinstate the two-hour downtown parking with no overnight parking. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Other old business, do we have anything else that we haven't covered?
I just wanna say, Jamie took me through the new police station slash storage, and it's, it looked real good. Very impressive with that thing. Going along good. Liked everything else, waiting on some things, but, and, uh.
Paul, what time is that Saturday? Fireman's breakfast?
Seven to ten.
Seven to ten.
I do not remember, I've topped my head, sorry.
I was gonna say, I forgot to.
Seven to ten.
And when is the downtown thing, Mark?
Five.
Five. Five.
Ribbon cutting at five.
Yes, the downtown square.
Some entertainment after that.
Mark's gonna send you dance.
Maybe.
Can't get you to yet.
And then we trips across the street, I think. We're gonna dig that hole.
So it's, it, yeah, this weekend, I'd like to see everybody do turn out and help the firemen down there. They're using it, it'd be down here at the community building, the breakfast, uh, and they're having a raffle and everything, so. You got family or friends or anybody, be sure and tell them about this and have them show up. And at Ribbon Cutting, we'd like to see, uh, I've been talking to some of the businesses and different ones. I'd like to see them there, because we'd like to see as many people as possible. Carrie's keeping it splattered all over Facebook, so, uh, she's doing a good job of that. So that'll be a great thing, have that available, to let people know exactly who, uh, who built this and, and know who, who we thank and, and anything like that. Any other new business? Not more files.
That was old business. I have a question, actually, I wanted to bring up real quick with Derek. Um, I've been, I found out that the sheriff charges for our, um, communications that our police department uses.
Hold on now.
That, that just does not seem right.
Tell us, and tell us about it.
That, I, I'm trying to put my head around it, how he can do that. Cause Indiana State IC Code, I'm sure has something to say with who has the jurisdiction to, or who is supposed to dispatch. And if they are supposed to do that, how they can then turn around and force communities to pay for it.
Gary, I'm pretty sure this is some kind of an agreement that we have from, I'm gonna say, three, four years ago.
A little longer than that, but I'm on that communications board.
Probably the first year I'm on the board.
There is basically a contractual agreement, and, and again, I didn't know this was coming, and so obviously, I haven't seen it, looked at it, reviewed it, nothing like that. But you saying this, my, my gut was saying, we do have a contact, and I, I do remember that, like, if we didn't like it, well, we could opt out.
Sure.
Right? And.
But then we have no communication. But then we have no communication.
There you have it.
But from a legal standpoint though, I mean, can he do that? Hold the town hostage? And on top of that, he's charging the community.
The local county?
That was, that was my, uh.
Not everybody else.
That was my argument, because they get all our nine-one-ones.
Yeah.
What's the question now? See if I can answer it.
It seems gray.
You've got a good question, to go through the whole thing, cause maybe not everybody's following. So the way it is right now, the sheriff does charge nine-one-one user fees, that are down on every phone. Now mainly cell, but all of that. So with those nine-one-one user fees, the sheriff obviously gets that money to supply dispatch, which they're saying takes care of that initial call.
Right.
Uh, and then it's stopped there. And I, I understand what you're asking, but I'm kind of, and George, that's where he's gonna kind of pipe in. Uh, his, I'm gonna say legality, his, what he has to do stops there. Cause he's gonna be a police department, just like anyone else in Indiana. So then providing that service is what we've gone to. And we went many, 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 many years, and they didn't charge us a dime.
And far, like, no, I, this is the first time I've ever heard of a sheriff doing this.
Well, now, you've gotta remember, now, what we're getting charged for is above and beyond. So like our fire EMS, they're paying for them virtually keeping track of our times. So once they dispatch that initial nine-one-one call, they're, they're truthfully done with the call. But we also tell them when we're route to the scene, when we're on the scene, uh, we need a medic, you're calling them. You need, you're, you're using those dispatchers. And it's the same thing I'm going to say with our police department, once that initial call goes out, they're, they're keeping track of when you're, when you're on traffic stop, when they're on a license plate, driver's license, any of that. Uh, I'm gonna say their responsibility ends there. But we're looking at the reverse side, and that's how this agreement came about. Our four to six thousand dollars a year is a lot cheaper than getting twenty-four hour a day dispatch, seven days a week. And that's kind of where it fell.
Yeah, and I think your question really isn't so much about just the responsibilities of dispatch, but it's the additional service that's offered. And I, I really think that's, from, again, I haven't looked at it in years. But again, that's my recollection, is really what's with towns, and it's not just Argus, but I think it's every community is paying for. So if you just wanna straight dispatch, alright, but if you wanna add that added ability to say, we need more officers, or we need this, we need that, and to be able to have that additional communication, that's what the town's paying for. And I think it's, again, on a pro-rata basis, based on calls per community, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, there's a formula, I can't tell you what the formula is right now, but it started back, they were, to run the dispatch center, they were gonna have a shortfall of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that first year. And that's what your nine, nine-one-one dispatchers, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, holidays, vacation coverage and everything, kind of like the police department. Why do we need five? Well, or six, or seven, because you can't run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, with time off with two guys, three guys. So they had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. There was a committee formed by, okay, I'm on for, um, you just power. Then you have fire, you have EMS, you have the city of Plymouth, you have police. Everybody has their own representative. And nobody wanted it, I kind of got snowballed, and there I got, I've been on it this whole time. So is there communication problems? Yes, it's like anything else. So with the money generated, we were going to cover that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, then you have upkeep on your communication boards. You need more people. Now you're competing with Saint Joe County, Casco County, that do charge for communications, wages, and so people leave. That's what this all came about, because we had to have people to cover those shifts. And like you said, the nine-one-one calls, when they call nine-one-one, they dispatch Argus Fire, they're done. We call and say, we need assistance from Rochester, we need assistance from three-one, that's us.
To pay for.
To me, the tax, the tax money does not cover it. It's like ninety percent of everything that we do, the tax, what's tax-based is not taxed. There's not enough taxes, so I always call it government mandated, but not funded.
Well, I can see, I've, I've actually seen departments that this can cause, this, this can cause an issue. I really, I don't know, it probably has not as of yet, but I can see it causing an issue by the sheriff enacting this though. Um, making things more ticky tack, cause say we get a chief down the road, twelve, fifteen years from now is doing this, and he's like, well, if my guys have to back up your sheriff's department, then we're gonna charge to have our guys go outside our, our jurisdiction, outside our town, to respond to back up an officer that needs assistance.
Yeah, we already had that discussion.
We've got that discussion, that's, you could start back down that road, and, and that's, that's not good.
We all, about what, two years ago, George, we all went to the county, I was there, Lisa was there. Erica, did you go?
I did.
Andy was there, we all went to this communications meeting with Gary, and that's when they wanted to substantially hire the where we're at today, and we just really bated into them and got to where we're at now. It is, yeah, nobody likes it, none of us like it, but it's tolerable. And, you know, is there problems? I agree with George. I was just talking to Corey today outside his truck, and he got a call. Now I couldn't even hear what the dispatcher said. It, it just jumbled garbage, is what it sounded like. And, you know, that's what we're paying for.
Like I said, I, I've just found out about this, so I, you mentioned old business, I know this is old business. Um, I'm trying to put my head around it, because I've never, I've, I've been a couple of different departments, law enforcement department, I've never heard of this, I've never seen this. And it just really blows my mind that a sheriff would, I understand budgets are tight, but.
He's on the jail, he can afford.
Yeah, he, he's got the jail, and, and he has his budgets. But where's it on our taxpayers of our community to help, to help balance his budget as a county entity? I, I just, it, it just doesn't sit good with me, that's all.
Alright.
It's not as good as any of us, Gary.
Any other new business of any kind? Nope. Okay, claims, since Lisa's not here, I guess I'll read the claims. Claims from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to November the second, twenty twenty-two. You already do it, Mark, I'll have it.
I don't have them.
I have them. Total check register of three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents, with payroll number twenty-two of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Made a total docket of three hundred and fifty-three dollars, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-two cents. And we've got the list of claims.
Make a motion to pass claims for eleven to twenty twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-two cents. Claims are from ten eighteen, twenty twenty-two to eleven to twenty twenty-two.
We do have a motion and a second to pass the claims from October eighteenth to November the second, twenty twenty-two, for the amount of three hundred and fifty-three dollars, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, I'll get that right, yes, seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-two cents. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Claims are passed.
Looking at Gary.
Should we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
So which one did that? Who one's that?
I got it.
One second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.